Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills: Bill Number 23-0370, 23-0371, 23-0323, 23-0389, and 23-0390. In attendance today, members of the committee, we have John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Good morning, Chair.
Robert Stokes is excused temporarily. I think he will be coming in. We have Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District absent, and Ryan Dorsey of the Third District, excused absence. And we have, I purposely left Councilman Conway last, because we have Councilman Conway of the Fourth District, and I want to wish Councilman Conway a happy birthday. Today is his... Representatives from the Office of the Mayor, First Office of the Council President. Tiffany Madden from the Macklin, Deputy Director of Legislation from the Council President's Office, and we have Nina, Representative from the Mayor's Office, and Sophia G. Let's begin. Bill Number 23-0370, zoning use regulation, residential care facilities age restricted, for the purpose of permitting certain residential care facilities in the EC2 zoning district as a conditional use requiring approval by ordinance of the mayor and city council and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on April 3, 2023. The bill sponsor is Councilman Conway, and I know Councilman Conway has been working on this for a very long time. Comments, Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been working on this since I became a councilman, interestingly. Not that I had any interest before then, I knew I was going to be on the council. So, this bill is as a result of us seeing an increasing trend in locating senior living facilities on college campuses. It allows for underutilized parts of colleges campuses to be utilized to foster partnerships between nursing and medical programs and the community. This bill would add age-restricted residential care facilities for folks who are 62 and older as a conditional use by ordinance in EC2 zones. So, this includes higher education campuses like Loyola, Notre Dame, Hopkins, Homewood, Coppin, and Morgan State University. The EC1 zoning district covers elementary, middle schools and high schools, so that would not be included in this bill. It expands the universe of what schools can do on their land, so I think it's going to give them a little more flexibility, and it would allow us as council members to work in partnership with the schools and with the community to make sure that community input engagement is considered all along the way. So, I want to urge a favorable report from the committee and look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee will now hear from agency representatives, and we'll start with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Elena DePietra from the City Law Department. The Law Department approves the bill for formal legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Eric Tiso for the Planning Commission. They reviewed this bill in their meeting of April 27, along with its companion bill that we'll discuss momentarily, and recommended the bill favorably. As the lead sponsor mentioned, this will add an additional related use to the district to be established by conditional use ordinance, and the commission did recommend favorable.
Thank you. Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nina Thumbless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA stands by its report and deferring to the report of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Housing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. Permitting residential care facilities in all EC2 zoning districts by ordinance may allow individuals 62 years old or older to access supportive housing in communities and districts that might not otherwise have been available, and it may help support inclusive housing opportunities for seniors across the city. So, DHCD stands by our bill report in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Parking Authority.
Afternoon, Madam Chair. Arco Sen from the Parking Authority, and we do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions at this point? Hearing none. The committee will now take public testimony. If you are online and would like to testify on this bill, please use the raise hand button to let us know. And I'll start with those that have signed up to testify on this bill. And we have three. And we'll start with Greg Fitzgerald.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Committee members.
Press that red button. I mean, turn red, the right hand. Thank you.
There we go. Sorry about that. I'll start over. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Committee members. My name is Greg Fitzgerald. I'm the Chief of Staff and Vice President for Planning and External Affairs at Notre Dame Maryland University. I'm joined by my colleague, Sean Delaney, who's our Vice President for Finance Administration at the university. I briefly just wanted to share, I believe you have a copy of my written testimony in your packet already, I just wanted to share that Notre Dame is very excited about this project to be able to partner with Brightview Senior Living to build a new senior living community in Baltimore City. As my councilman just mentioned, there's a growing trend nationwide to be able to partner between senior retirement communities and college universities. There's over 75 such partnerships already occurring across the country. Just north of us in Baltimore County, Goucher College recently announced a partnership with Edenwald to be able to build, expand their facility onto their campus. There's a lot of synergies between these projects, between the university and senior retirement communities. Notre Dame is home to our Renaissance Institute, which is our 50-plus senior lifelong learning program, which we're very excited to partner with Brightview, excuse me, partner with Brightview on that program. And as you may know, Notre Dame is one of the leading producers of healthcare majors in the state with nursing, occupational therapy, art therapy, pharmacy, and student physician assistant. We look forward to be able to place some of our students at the facility so they can receive their clinical and practicum hours there. Throughout the process, Notre Dame has been engaged with various community members, including the Homeland Association, who you may hear from in a little bit, as well as other surrounding neighborhoods, as well as the archdiocese of Baltimore and St. Mary's Cemetery/Parish. You have a copy in your packets of the MOU between Notre Dame, Brightview Senior Living Development, and the Homeland Association. And there's a forthcoming agreement between Notre Dame, Brightview Senior Living Development, and St. Mary's Cemetery/the Archdiocese. We've reached an agreement in principle regarding what the future of parking and access to the cemetery will look like, and we all mutually agreed at some time ago to go on a pause until this zoning process had finished, and then we'll be circling back short with to finalize those agreements and move forward. In conclusion, I just want to say we think this is a wonderful project, not only for Notre Dame and for Brightview, but also for Baltimore City in general. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We do have your written testimony. We'll go ahead to Kristin Shab.
Shab.
Shab?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt. I just want to know for folks that are testifying, there are two bills. This first bill is just for the broad ability to allow senior living facilities on college campuses, or EC2s more specifically. The second bill will be more specifically about the project, so just want to note that in your testimony if you wanted to testify on both.
That's great. Good afternoon. I'm Kristin Shab. I'm the current President of the Homeland Association, and I'm just here to say that we have entered into a memorandum of understanding with Brightview and Notre Dame, and we are in support of this bill and the second bill, opening up in case anybody has any questions.
Thank you. We have your MOU.
Yes.
Thank you. Caroline Hecker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg, Martin Greenberg. I represent Brightview Senior Living, and I'm joined by Austin Koo, a representative of Brightview as well. Thank you, Councilman Conway, for introducing the bill, and happy birthday. I can't imagine a better way to spend your birthday than here with us. Everything that I was going to say about all the synergies between university campuses and senior living facilities has really already been said, but I'm happy to take any questions on behalf of Brightview if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions thus far? Hearing none?
Thank you.
And then now we'll check call on attendees. And there is one person, Brian, are you there? Brian?
Actually, it's Bridget Cardy. Yes.
Go ahead. You're on.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm a resident of the Villages of Homeland Southway, and I actually didn't, was not made aware of any sort of understanding between the Villages and this bill. There are two different presidents of the association. There's the Villages of Homeland East and the Villages of Homeland West. So, at the Villages of Homeland West, we were not made aware of any sort of understanding between this, specifically the project next door and going on. For me specifically, I have no problem with retirement senior living facilities on college campuses. I think that's a great idea. However, with the project going on next door, I don't think that there's been a whole lot of community interaction. Me specifically, I found out about what was going on when I, going through walks, and I saw the sign, and I wanted to engage because I see a whole lot of dumping going on in the parking lot, which is a concern to me because the, this is a different thing. However, I do think with the construction of another building is going to impact the surrounding area, as well as there are a lot of apartment buildings in Homeland East that could be considered for senior, for senior living. I just think that there could be more of a community actual intake of what is going on with the project next door. I think that that has not been considered, and I'm just putting in my two cents. That's all. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and just a note, please call 311 right away to report that dumping, and I'm sure Councilman Conway's office will assist in that as well. But it's important to call, get that reported, so the agency can work on that as soon as possible. Thank you for your testimony. And checking for any online attendees. I think that's the only one. Okay, let's go for to the telephone callers. Are there? Someone just came, okay. Jessica, are you there? Jessica? Hello?
I'm not sure. Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you here to testify on the residential care facilities?
Yeah, I'm a little confused whether I should be commenting on this bill or the companion bill, which is more specific to St. Mary's Cemetery, and I'm willing to wait for the second bill if that's appropriate.
That's coming up next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more? Okay, seeing no more on this bill. Do committee members have any comments or questions? Okay. The committee heard testimony and recommendations to support the legal standards and findings from the Law Department. Is there a motion to recommend the bill is favorable?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Bullock, second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway is a yes. Dorsey absent. Glover absent. Ramos is a yes, and Stokes absent. This bill has passed and will move to second reader. The next bill, Bill Number 23-0371, zoning conditional use residential care facility age restricted, 201 Homeland Avenue and a portion of Block 5027, Lot 003. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a residential care facility age restricted with 171 units on the property known as 201 Homeland Avenue, Block 5027, Lot 005, and a portion of Block 5027, Lot 003, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, providing for a certain contingency, providing for a special effective date. This bill was also introduced on April 3, 2023. The bill sponsor, Councilmember Conway. Councilmember, would you like to comment on this bill?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, this bill, on the tail end of the first bill, should the first bill pass, would grant a conditional use for residential care facility at 201 Homeland Avenue. This property is formerly known as the Knights of Columbus Building, who sold it to Notre Dame several years ago. So, Notre Dame plans to sign a 99-year lease with Brightview Senior Living, which would operate a senior living facility there and partner with Notre Dame on programs for its nursing school. I introduced this bill after years of discussion, and when I alluded to, I started these discussions before I even became a councilperson because these things were moving, or at least being discussed before I even came on, and I very quickly got up to speed. And there's been a lot of community engagement on these matters. The Homeland Association, which has supported the bill, formed a work group that included experts in various fields to study all of the various issues that come out of a development like this and a zoning change like this, and ultimately decided this was the best way to go. They discussed it at their open board meetings and at their annual meeting last October. They also held a separate meeting with the proposed development to talk with folks who had some serious concerns. Brightview and Notre Dame also hosted site visits, so two in particular, on two weekends in October, where dozens of people actually came out to view the site and get a better understanding of the actual space and what could, what was being proposed. On the bill file is, you noted earlier, a 14-page memorandum of understanding signed between the Homeland Association, Notre Dame, and Brightview, and they provided a letter of support to that end. Brightview and Notre Dame also held a series of discussions in 2021 and 2022 with St. Mary's and the Archdiocese of Baltimore regarding the neighboring cemetery, which we'll probably hear some more about today, which is not part of the property, being granted as a conditional use. There have been concerns brought up because there will no longer be the parking on the Knights of Columbus Building site that was formerly used as parking for the cemetery, and the parties all came to an agreement by which they would establish a new, or they would construct a new parking lot where there's an existing gate and a curb cut so that folks would be able to continue visiting their loved ones during and after construction of the new facility. My office, we've of course been getting some feedback, some negative feedback as well, about the parking considerations, and, you know, we reached out to St. Mary's to better understand if they were still on board, and confirmed as of this morning that St. Mary's is still on board, and they do fully support this zoning and this change. I'm sure that Notre Dame and Brightview can speak more to this during their testimony, and I think Greg did touch on some of that during his speech, and I'm happy to continue to facilitate conversations during this project. I don't think the community feedback and engagement stops at this point. I think it continues well on into, before they put the first shovel into the ground. So, to that end, I urge a favorable report and look forward to the testimony and questions.
Thank you so much for those details. The committee will now hear from agency representatives, and we'll start again with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietra from the Law Department. The Law Department in its report noted that this is a new classification under this particular zoning, a new condition under this particular zoning classification, and we set forth the standards that would apply under certain circumstances. So, provided that, the, excuse me, the Planning Department's report provides for appropriate findings, the Law Department can approve the bill for formal legal sufficiency.
Thank you. So, now we'll hear from the Planning Department. Do you have an amendment as well?
Yes, it's a very simple one. Again, the Planning Commission reviewed this bill in their meeting of April 27, and they recommended approval with one amendment, that the specific development plans must be approved by the Planning Commission. In essence, that's a little bit of belt and suspenders because the proposed building location would straddle a property boundary, so they're going to have to do a subdivision. They're going to have to take that through the Planning Commission. There's always going to be a Planning Commission review before a building can come here, one way or another, but this just makes it more clear in this part of the process that that should happen. So, to that effect, the Planning Commission did review some conceptual designs for a building, owing to the fact that the ability to have this use in the district at all hasn't yet been resolved. Brightview has not gone too far downstream for practical reasons, but we always will have the normal development review process. Again, it's going to be a subdivision. That development plan will have to go through the Planning Commission in a public hearing, so we believe that the public interest is safeguarded there. Our staff report outlines the findings of fact for conditional uses. Without belaboring that, it's in our staff report, but if you have any questions, I can expound on that. Otherwise, we believe this is a reasonable use for this location.
Thank you. Any questions to Planning from the committee? Hearing none. We'll go to the BMZA, Nina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Thumbless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA stands by its report and deferring to the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And Stephanie from Housing.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock with DHCD. DHCD stands by our bill report in support of this bill.
Thank you. And Liam Davis from Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. I do want to mention, anytime there is a new development involving over 10 dwelling units or exceeding 15,000 square feet, it's subject to a traffic impact study. So, that's something to just keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. The Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you. Salaf Omar with BDC, and we stand by our bill report a favorable.
Thank you. Fire Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nina Thumbless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Fire Department stands by its report and has no opposition to this legislation.
Thank you, Nina. And the Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Arco Sen from the Parking Authority, and we do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee to the agencies? Hearing none. We're now looking at public testimony. The committee will now hear public testimony. If you are online and would like to testify on the bill, please use the raise hand button to let us know. Just remembering that. We're starting with the in-person, and I see Greg Fitzgerald. You're finished? Because you did both. Okay. And Caroline, you have anything else to add from the first bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it's okay with you, I'd like to wait till the end, and maybe I can respond to some of the other comments. I expect we'll hear from other members of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Kristin, did you want to testify a second time? Okay. Okay. Mary Shelley Notch? Press the...
Madam Chair, committee members, I've never done this before, so bear with me.
That's okay. Take your time.
I've been a member of St. Mary's Church, who owns the cemetery for over 60 years, and back in 1999, we celebrated our Sesquicentennial anniversary, and we actually put together a history book of St. Mary's, and there's a chapter in here on the cemetery. Much has been said about Notre Dame of Maryland and Brightview, and definitely I can feel that this community, this building is needed in the area. As a former pre-nursing student at NDMU, it would have been nice to walk across the street and take care of patients there. However, the issue today is the parking issue. For many years, St. Mary's, when there were funerals taking place, the Knights of Columbus had given St. Mary's the right of access. If anyone's ever been to this area, it's about seven acres, and they said that they would create a road at the lower part of the cemetery, which is right near the stream. However, just to give you a little history on the cemetery, it was established in 1850. Currently, well, as of 1994, there were almost 3,500 people buried in the cemetery who can't speak today. But in the 1980s, they needed more space, so they opened up a new section, and now it's over 4,000 people are buried in the cemetery, including my in-laws and quite a few famous people, including Jack Dunn, the former owner and manager, and seven-time pennant-winning Baltimore Orioles was interred here, and Lindsay O'Tennessack, who went down in the Pan Am Lockerbie Scotland air disaster. So, I ask that up until this time, with the hearse and the large families that are gathered during funeral celebrations in honor of someone's life, that the parking lot still be open without a little small road at the end. The only other thing that I wanted to say was, it was used many years ago, as early as 1799, and during the flu epidemic, many orphans, et cetera, were buried here in unmarked graves. So, even though someone said that they surveyed the area and there were no graves, but many were buried at that time, even without adequate burial. So, I ask to be considered that I reject this part of the bill. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you for your testimony. And then we have Elena Perry. Is Elena Perry here? Oh, hi.
May I ask that the members who are here?
Yes. Matt will give those to us. Thank you.
Ms. Darling went over a lot of the historical background of the cemetery and the condensed version. I thought you might be interested.
Sure.
Good afternoon. My name is Helene Perry, and I am a parishioner of the St. Mary of Assumption Church, which operates the St. Mary Cemetery. I appreciate this opportunity to offer some comments in regard to this bill regarding the zoning variance of a foreign-adjacent property. I've read the information provided concerning the bill. Proposed bill has many attachments detailing how to address concerns such as tree canopy, traffic impact, and the impact on the neighborhood houses which face the property. However, I'm concerned that I don't find anything being addressed as an attachment, and I feel it is missing in the overall aspect of the bill and needs to be addressed before the bill is voted on, and therefore, I would like to urge today that a vote on this bill be postponed until such can be addressed. such can be addressed. If I could provide just a short context for this request, the property owned by Notre Dame is contiguous to the St. Mary's Cemetery. There is a mutual boundary, the westernmost cemetery boundary and the easternmost boundary of Notre Dame. Originally, the two plots were part of a single tract where the parish church was located, excuse me, the cemetery just surrounded the church, and it's an old historic cemetery. As the parish grew, in 1942, the church was relocated to York Road. In 1950, a new school building was constructed there on York Road also. The cemetery alone remains, but is actively operated by the parish. For many decades, the tract adjacent to that western boundary was owned by the parish. After a new school was built on York Road, the Knights of Columbus purchased the old buildings and the surrounding land. For years, they hosted meetings and events. When the Knights purchased the tract, the three entrances to the cemetery were found around the mutual boundary. So there was a concern about access to the cemetery. However, it's our understanding that a 15-foot right-of-way is mandated by the state of Maryland, and in such circumstances, to allow a cemetery to have perpetual access. Such a right-of-way was then established, and in addition, a gentleman's agreement between the Knights allowed for their parking lot to be used for parking for funerals and such for maintenance values. About a decade ago, the Knights had to put the building up for sale, and the tract was purchased by Notre Dame. Again, there was concern about the cemetery access, and Notre Dame promised to respect the original agreement, which they did. However, now we understand this right-of-way access will no longer be possible due to their plans with Brightwood. Notre Dame, as you have heard, has offered to construct a new entrance for access on the northeast corner of the cemetery property, as well as an interior road and parking area. So we have a situation where, on the one hand, this bill contains a large number of special agreements that accommodate the homeland residents and other areas, even though the plot in question is not in homeland. On the other hand, though, there is no mention in the bill of the fact that Notre Dame has a legal obligation to provide perpetual access to the cemetery, or any of the mutually agreed-upon specifics of how they tend to provide the accommodation. As the operator of the cemetery, the parish has a responsibility to lot owners to provide access to their plots and to maintain not only their individual plots, but also the ambiance and character of the cemetery. There are, at this point, some unanswered questions about a number of issues. If current access is closed, lot holders deserve to know why and how it affects access to their individual plots. And they should be provided with the details of the proposed access road. Information about all such currently unanswered questions and their solutions should be included as an additional attachment to Bill 230371. I respectfully request the council to defer their vote on this bill until it contains an additional attachment that covers the resolution of the access concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. S. Blackwell? I see you're, okay, you signed up, but you don't want to testify? Okay. And then there was someone else. Let's move on to online attendees. We will now call on attendees online who have their hands raised. And while he's, while he's working on that, I just want to make sure that everyone that signed up had a chance to testify. There was another name, you didn't check, that you wanted to testify, but I'll, is it Stewart, the last name? Did you want to testify?
Yes, I signed up.
Oh, okay. Come on, you can testify before we get on the.
Schmidt, okay.
Schmidt? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think I was right after Mary Shelley Darling.
No, it was, you're after, oh, okay. Go ahead.
I asked the council not to approve the change in the zoning. I think parking is an issue in the community with both those colleges, Notre Dame University and Loyola University. And you see in homeland, people are putting, people are, in homeland are putting up signs, "Don't park," so there is a parking issue. When the Knights, all that property used to be St. Mary's when it was, the church was over there and the school and everything, so they transferred it to the Knights. And then Notre Dame had, took over the property, buying it with an agreement that they had. But Notre Dame, Notre Dame met, and Brightview met with the Homeland Association, showing the plans, but no meeting was held with the Govans community and the lot owners, yet the cemetery basically is in Govans, not homeland, because homeland is the Pirineo State, which is the other side of Homeland Avenue. So the Knights, when they sold the property, they assured everybody that there would be no changes in the parking and visiting to the cemetery and for funerals would be okay where it was on that upper parking lot. And I think that is now been changed by Notre Dame, which wants to flip the property and make money as a nursing home. I don't think, everybody said, "Oh, it's all going to be the same." You know, "We're all still going to be able to park there," and they're going to use that property to park the people for the Renaissance Institute, which if you've ever been over there, when they had that, it was parking everywhere. So I think there are issues that should be addressed, and I think there should be some effort to allow the parking still on that upper lot. I mean, whether they get 150 beds or two, you know, it's all about money, let's face it. And I don't think they were honest when they, when they changed it over to Brightview, when in reality, they told everybody, "Oh, we needed for our university parking." So anyway, let me see here. Anyway, that's basically where I feel that parking should still be up there. Oh, what I wanted to add was, while they were talking to all the people here, I think four councilmen are buried there. Mr. Kern, Frank Gallagher was the president, Henry Hergenrother, and I think Mr. DeWes. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Before we go on, last call for anyone else here present that wants to testify on this bill. And seeing none, let's move on. Bryn, are you there? Did you want to testify now?
Hello?
Hi.
Yes, hi, Bryn McLarty, again, from Homeland Southway. I wanted to, sorry, before, that was my first time ever testifying in a city council meeting. I appreciate you listening to me. It's a very anxiety-inducing. I just wanted to speak again to this specific proposed bill around the area next to Homeland and Notre Dame taking it on. Again, I don't think it's really taking into consideration the surrounding community. When I go for walks, I went for a walk recently, and I went and just lied down in, or like, in the field at Notre Dame, and I was told to leave because I am not a student and I am not a faculty member, and it's like a private, it's privatized land. And that's not, like, that's not incorporating the community at large. So I'm concerned that if this bill comes along and like takes over the parking lot and takes over the Knights' building, that it's just, it's Notre Dame coming along and taking over more community land, or it's not community land, but like, they're just going to take over more land and less people around in the community will have access to like walking around, because that's what universities do in this city. As well, it seems like Brightview said that they didn't go more down towards the creek and like do surveillance or like look into what, that area. There's a lot of animals and birds, like blue herons, there was a bald eagle, several owls that like live in this area. And my concern is that like, again, if we do more construction and more people are living in that space, then what is the impact, the environmental impact going to do in this creek into, into these animals? And I'm, I'm all for like older people, senior living, senior people living in this community. I just think that there are other ways to go about it. We, we have a lot of apartments in Homeland. I know for a fact that there is someone who owns way, a lot of apartments, who is about to sell them. And I think that there's an opportunity for Notre Dame, if they're actually interested in working with the community and with like older individuals, that there can be something done without doing a whole bunch of development on the land and, and hurting and harming more than helping. And so I respectfully request that this bill not move forward and more community work actually be done. Instead of just like only the neighbors on the other side of Villages Homeland East be considered, the villages of, like, the neighbors of Villages Homeland West also be considered, because that was never in our board minutes. I don't know where it's coming from, that it was in our board minutes, because it wasn't, and I look at them every month. As well as, again, I think that there are other opportunities for all community members in Homeland, in Govans, in all areas of like the surrounding space be considered, not just in minutes, but you know, talking to each other. So again, I respectfully request that this bill not go through. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Moving on, Jessica? Mendoza?
Yes, here I am.
Hi, you're on.
Hi. Hi, yes, thank you very much. This is also a new one for me, a first for me, so thank you for my, the opportunity. And I first want to state that a lot of, this, this has come about in terms of the St. Mary's community in the last week or so, once people noticed the posting of the bills on, along Homeland Avenue, so got people's attention. So in this very short last week, this, a very short amount of time, a number of us, including me, started actually asking St. Mary's and others what the facts behind this bill. Let me just say, I am a longtime parishioner at St. Mary's, and I am an owner of cemetery, my husband and I are owners of the cemetery plots in the cemetery. Our daughter is buried there, many, many family members and extended family members. And as Ms. Knack and, and Ms. Perry mentioned, it's a historic cemetery where we have many very old graves, very, you know, many of the Baltimore, many leaders of, in Baltimore City and the cultural aspects of Baltimore are buried there. So it's a, so that's, that's my standing. That's why, that's my stakeholding in this whole conversation. As a member of St. Mary's, I did, we did receive a notice about a year, well, about several months ago, it was a report from the parish council, pastoral council stating that the parish and the archdiocese were in negotiation with Notre Dame and Brightview on this project. And since then, we've heard zero. Now, there's some, you know, there seems to be like a consensus that St. Mary's community was, has been involved in this, but we haven't been. And in fact, in speaking to people this past week, a lot of them were surprised that this was happening, because when they saw the notice last fall, they anticipated being called upon to give input or get feedback, and it hasn't happened. So I know that there were discussions between Notre Dame, St. Mary's leadership, and the archdiocese, but the communities were not part of that, particularly back again to cemetery, to the cemetery plot owners and families with loved ones there in the cemetery. So I know Mr. Conway's office has received a number of emails because of our efforts over this past weekend, and I want to say thank you to his office and to himself for, they were very helpful in getting, helping us get our letters to, and understanding the process. So the main, the main crux of things, though, is this idea, A, that there was communication with St. Mary's. So again, I won't belabor that point. But number two, I know that the proposal is to have this parking lot at the bottom or the west end of the cemetery. And one thing that seems not to be mentioned is a road that's going to loop up through the old, through this beautiful pastoral setting of this old cemetery. This road is supposed to loop up through the cemetery, somehow turn around and go back out again when it comes to funerals. And there, and the point being that the, the current access, which Ms. Perry talked about, is on the east end, up at the top of this hill where the, on which the cemetery is located. There's a slight slope from that Notre Dame slash Knights of Columbus west side, which then quickly goes to a steep, steep slope down at the bottom of the hill, which is where this proposed new parking lot is. So this idea that, of this new parking lot that's going to take over what is additional green space when someone is enjoying or reflecting in the cemetery will now be some sort of a parking lot, asphalt or whatever, and then a road looping again through this cemetery to allow, I suppose, people with disabilities or limited access for climbing a steep hill. But now, now the cemetery itself is marred by a road and perhaps cars being parked while people visit. I just think it's an unsatisfactory solution. There is another solution, which is to maintain the current right-of-way that we do have or that we thought we had. It would take some modification along the west end of that property line between the cemetery and the edge of the Notre Dame property. And it could connect with a, with an existing old road that goes down the south side of the property and ends in a Notre Dame parking area that people could then make a circuit out if it came to that. That would also be a, I would think, a manageable way of conducting funerals. So, but that, that alternative seems not to be discussed. I don't know, perhaps, I don't know why. So all I'm, all we're saying is that people who, you know, we, it's a, it's a meaningful place to us, and it's meaningful in where, the way it looks now. It's a beautiful setting. It's a peaceful setting. People who bought plots there thought that that's what they were buying. And it, it just, I think that, so that's, like, I don't, sorry.
Thank you.
So I guess that's the end for me. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I hope everyone will consider all of this. And again, thank you to Mr. Conway's office for helping us out. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. And the committee does have copies of those emails. Now we're moving to Judy Harding. Judy, are you on?
You hear me okay?
Now we can, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to comment, and I again want to thank Mr. Conway's office for being so helpful. I really will keep my comments short. I just want to say that Ms. Perry's comments really, they really addressed my comments much more articulately, and I really really, they really addressed my comments much more articulately, and I really think her comment should be taken seriously. I am not a member of St. Mary's Church, but I do, I am a plot owner on the top west side of the cemetery, which is at the top of the hill that's close to the, the old parking lot. And I bought the plot ironically at the beginning of COVID, and was told at that point that I could have access, my family members could have access from the old parking lot. So, my concerns are specifically in regard to the parking and access. I've looked closely at the plan for the new road that would be at the bottom of the hill, which is on the east side, bottom of the cemetery, and it's really inadequate, it's, the turnaround area is very small, it's right adjacent to the stream, so there are concerns with flooding and whatnot. And then there's the steep climb, as Ms. Mendoza indicated, up the hill to where my plot is, and so handicapped access is a concern as well. So, I think I would encourage the committee just to defer a final vote until some of the parking issues are addressed, and I, I think some of the suggestions presented to, to a different alternative to the parking area that is now being considered would be a good way to go. And I think there are other ways to easily address some of the concerns by providing parking in a different area and access to the same original west side of the cemetery. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, and looking to see if we have telephone callers, and I see none, so that was the last one line. So, then we'll go back to Caroline Hecker. After listening to all this, do you have comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, again for the record, Caroline Hecker Rosenberg Martin Greenberg on behalf of Brightview. I want to just clarify a couple of things, because there's been a lot of discussion this afternoon about the St. Mary's Cemetery, which is adjacent to the Brightview site. This bill that's in front of the committee today only addresses the conditional use of a portion of the NDMU campus and the former Knights of Columbus building for use by Brightview as an age-restricted residential care facility. The bill has absolutely no impact on the cemetery. The site design of both the Brightview facility and any changes to the cemetery, whether within their boundaries or outside of their boundaries, will all have to go through the normal development review process, through the planning department, through site plan review, through the design review process, and with the amendment that the planning commission suggested, which Brightview supports, back to the planning commission for planning commission approval of the ultimate development plan. So really, you know, while we appreciate the concerns that have been raised today regarding future parking and access for the cemetery, it's really, they're, they're, they're sort of hypothetical in nature at this point, there isn't a plan that's in front of this committee or anyone else at the moment, but those, those plans will ultimately be reviewed and approved by the planning commission after a thorough public comment process. So, you know, there, there will certainly be ample opportunity for participation in that process going forward, for input from the community associations. Brightview has been working extensively for the last several years with the Homeland Association, as you know, there's a memorandum of understanding in your file with them, and Ms. Schaub is here in support as well on behalf of the association. So, with all that, we respectfully request that the committee approve the bill, move it forward.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions to Caroline? Hearing none. Eric with Department of Planning, and so you can verify the conversations about access to the cemetery and parking can move along as with the meetings that will eventually take place?
Sure, I mean, we will, of course, review the development plans. One thing that is not visible to us, if there is some form of private agreement, deed restriction, that's not part of city regulation, that's privately enforced, we would not have information on that. So unfortunately, I can't see that if I don't know about it. I would hope that the university can work with neighbors to address that and incorporate that into the specific plans that they bring to us, so I just wanted to share that one warning. But ultimately, it will end up before the planning commission as part of a subdivision hearing, so if it's not taken care of, they'll hear about it then.
Thank you. Committee members, any comments or questions? And sponsor, you have comments after what you've heard today as well?
Yeah, first, I want to thank all the folks that, that reached out. I want to say, this morning, I got 50 emails. We all got that as part of the package, I appreciate the, the engagement, to actually engage with this process, that's what this is for, this is why we do these hearings, so that we can have as much input as, as possible. I, I have to say, I, I agree, this is not, this, this bill, this process is not about the cemetery, that is a separate property, and I think it would be in some ways unfair to not move forward because of a property that is not tied to this property. That said, I do think that the concerns brought forward are legitimate concerns, and we want to make sure that folks have the opportunity to, to visit their loved ones and continue to honor the folks that they, they spent their life with. So, I, I, I think, you know, Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, I, I do still want to move forward with this. I do think that, you know, according to planning and of course, Ms. Hecker, it, it seems that there will be a number of other gateways and stops for us to consider how to address some of the concerns between the two properties, once they were sold separately, and the considerations for parking and otherwise. So I do think we'll have an opportunity to take another bite at the apple. So with, with that, I'll, if I can make a motion or...
And I do want to recognize, Councilman Stokes, a member of the committee, had another hearing he had to run to, so he was here listening to testimony as well. The committee heard testimony and recommendations to support the legal standards and findings, and so is their motion for the firstly, the planning commission's amendment. So moved by Conway, second?
Second.
Second by Bullock, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Is there a motion to move the, move the recommended bill favorable with amendment? So moved by Conway.
Second.
Second by Bullock. Chair Middleton, yes, Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes, Conway? Is a yes. Dorsey, excuse absence, Glover, absent, Ramos? Is a yes, Stokes?
I just want to explain my vote, I was listening, so if I walked in here a little late, I don't want you to think I just walked in and just voted yes, I was over planning it, never here, when I just want everybody in the public, no, I was over there listening, so I vote yes.
Thank you for that. This bill will move to second reader at the very next council meeting. Next bill, number 22-0323, zoning conditional use parking lot 3618, and 3620 Elm Avenue, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of an open off-street parking area on the property is known as 3618 Elm Avenue, block 3538, lot 038, and 3620 Elm Avenue, block 3538, lot 037, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, and providing for a special effective date, this bill was introduced on December 5th, 2022. And the bill's sponsor, Councilmember Ramos. I know the council member would like to say a few words, she's also been working on this bill for a very long time, and your comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thanks to the agencies. This bill designates two properties, 3618 and 3620 Elm Avenue, as conditional use parking to be able to support a very well-known and friendly to the community business, The Wine Source. And so, they're very popular, which, which is great, it also causes parking pressure on the residents in terms of street parking, so adding a parking lot is important. It is unfortunate that we will be demolishing two homes, they're in pretty bad shape, but I've committed to the community as well as to this body that, you know, we will continue our efforts to create additional housing in other places in the community as well as in the city. So, I would appreciate my colleagues' support, I did have written comments that I've submitted to the, to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do have those comments. So we'll go ahead and hear from agency representatives, we'll start with the city solicitor's office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Elena DePietra from the Baltimore City Law Department. The law department approves this bill for form of legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Planning Commission, Eric?
Good afternoon again, the planning commission reviewed this bill in their meeting on February 9th, and they found that it meets all of the required findings for conditional use and recommend favorable.
Thank you. Nina with BMZA?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nina Themelis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA stands by its report and defers to the report and recommendation of the planning commission.
Thank you. Transportation?
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. I do want to mention, you know, in the future, some of the feedback we got from our traffic division is, you know, if there is a need for additional parking in the future, there's, the parking lot immediately adjacent can be updated to optimize more space, parking space there. But overall, again, no objection. Thank you.
Thank you, and Stephanie Murdock recuses herself from this bill, and Nina will speak on behalf of the agency.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. DHCD stands by its report and defers to the Department of Planning for this bill.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation?
Sotef Omar with BDC, and we stand by our bill report of favorable.
Thank you, and the Parking Authority?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Arco Sen from the Parking Authority, and we do not oppose a passage of the bill.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee?
Madam Chair, just wanted to add a couple of things.
Councilwoman Ramos, yes.
One is that we did have, The Wine Source and the representatives did meet with the community several times, and we also had a specific meeting with the residents on those blocks adjacent to the parking lot, so in terms of, you know, direction of the parking and all of that, we were able to work that out. I also have in the packet a letter of support from the Hampden Merchants, and I just received the letter of support from the Hampden Community Council, which I'll add to the file.
Thank you.
And then I also have David Wells from The Wine Source here to testify.
Yes, thank you for those details. Mr. Wells, we're now take public testimony, and we'll start with the people that are in person here, and Mr. Wells, you can come up to the podium. Cut that button on, on the...
Left.
Yes. Oops, right, I'm sorry. Yes, you're on.
Well, I don't have much to add, other than what's already been stated.
Say who you are.
David Wells, I own The Wine Source, and have done so since its inception on October 1st of 2001, so it's been a long ride. And all I'm trying to do is honor a promise I made to the community, that if an opportunity presented itself to improve the parking, I would do that. And I'm trying to honor that commitment with being respectful to those who live there and any concerns they may have, and that will be factored into the final plan as well. So that's really all I have.
Thank you. Any questions to that one? Thank you for your testimony. And that's the only person that has signed up to be in person, do we have any online Jed Weeks? Jed Weeks?
Chair, members of the committee, happy birthday, Councilman Conway. I'm Jed Weeks, interim executive director of Bike More. We think adding curb cuts and surface parking lots in dense walkable communities is harmful, and I think a much better solution would be to work to restripe the existing lot's core design to add capacity or consolidate the existing lot with a new lot utilizing a single curb cut. We're aware of some neighborhood architects suggesting these solutions that have reached out, I think, to Wine Source and the councilwoman with a feasible approach. Unfortunately, these options haven't really been properly evaluated in the rush to approve the legislation and are discarded because revised stormwater regs would slightly slow construction. That said, that's not why we are testifying today. Our main concern and criticism is with Baltimore City Department of Transportation, who is regularly applying its complete streets ordinance and manual guidance inconsistently, leading to what could be viewed as arbitrary or capricious decision-making. Elm is in the urban village street typology. Prior curb cuts in the urban village street types have been denied to other developers, causing entire development project revisions. The stated reason to Bike More was that the new curb, new curb cuts were, quote, "not in line with the goals of our urban village street types and shall be denied," end quote. Inconsistent application of this law sets a bad precedent for the future of complete streets and walkability in Baltimore. Passing this legislation will press Baltimore City Department of Transportation into issuing a curb cut permit, creating this disparity and the potential for subsequent legal action from prior applicants. So that's our main concern. Finally, we have a question, we have not seen the required long-term bicycle parking space rendered in the design, so we're curious where that enclosed lockable storage area will be located. Feel free to ask me questions about our testimony, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony. Checking to see if there's anyone else, seeing none, there's also no telephone callers. The committee heard testimony and recommendations to support the legal and legal standards and findings on this bill, is there a motion to move the bill favorable? So moved by Councilwoman Ramos, second, by Councilwoman Bullock. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilwoman Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Conway just stepped away a minute. And Councilmember, we're now taking the vote on the Elm Street, and... Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey absent, Glover absent, Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes, and Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill moves to second reader at the next council meeting. The next bill, bill number 23-0389, a transit-oriented development, Rice's Town Plaza, for the purpose of supporting a state transit-oriented development designation for Rice's Town Plaza, the area surrounding and including the Rice's Town Plaza Metro Subway Link Station, and providing for a special effective date, this bill was introduced on May 15th, 2023. The bill's sponsor, President Mosby on behalf of the administration, will now hear from agency representatives, and we'll start with transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. If it's okay, I'd like to read our testimony into the records so the public can, can hear it. So Marin City Council Resolution 23-0389 seeks to formally clarify support for state transit-oriented development designation for properties surrounding the existing Rice's Town Plaza Metro Subway Link Station. Existing state law requires local governments to formally announce support for state TOD designation in the form of a resolution from a locality's legislative body. State TOD designation of Rice's Town Plaza Metro Subway Link Station was identified as a priority request in Baltimore City's 2023 priority letter to Maryland Department of Transportation. Located on the 6400 block of Wabash Avenue, Rice's Town Plaza Metro Subway Link Station is situated directly across the street from Social Security Administration, a major employer within Baltimore City. This portion of northwest Baltimore City currently contains a number of sizable, underdeveloped parcels that could benefit from state TOD designation and be redeveloped into walkable, transit-accessible, mixed-use development. As defined by the transportation article, state TOD designation would provide the area with dense, mixed-use, deliberately planned development within a half mile of transit stations that is designed to increase transit ridership. If implemented, state TOD designation will help maximize economic development potential of the existing Rice's Town Plaza... of the existing Rice's Town Plaza Metro Subway Link Station and abutting neighborhoods in unison with B.C. Dot's complete streets efforts. The process for formal state TOD designation is slated to change July 1st, 2023, due to the adoption of House Bill 12 during the 2023 legislative session. With that in mind, we are requesting a favorable report on Maron City Council Resolution 23-0389. Thank you.
Members of the committee, the Planning Commission reviewed this bill in their meeting of June 8th, and they recommend favorable.
Thank you. Are you representing the Law Department? I'm sorry.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Jeff Hocksteller on behalf of the Law Department. The Law Department does approve this bill for formal legal sufficiency. However, we made a few minor amendment recommendations, primarily, one, to eliminate a reference to an executive order of the governor, which is not relevant to this particular resolution, and, two, just to strengthen and clarify the wording, to reflect that the resolution is a designation of the mayor and city council. Right now, it just says "support," but the state transportation article suggests that it should be a formal designation.
Thank you. Moving on to the BMZA?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA stands by its report and does not take a position on this legislation.
Thank you. Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock, Director of Legislative Services for DHCD. Grants for transportation upgrades can help stabilize and connect neighborhoods and surrounding communities, as well as encourage the development of housing options accessible to public transit. We stand by our bill report and request a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. The Baltimore Development Corporation?
Sylph Omar with BDC, and we stand by our bill report of favorable.
Thank you. Chaps? Thank you. And you are?
Eric Holcomb, Executive Director.
Thank you. Public Works?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. I want to extend my apologies to this committee. I didn't realize we had been referred this bill, but we have supporting positions for both this bill and the next bill to be heard. I'm also a member of the Planning Commission and did hear extensive presentation on both of these bills, supporting a TOD for two specific locations. It is my understanding that we have the opportunity here for some potential resources and, and supporting development for these areas. I will just add that all of my bill reports are up for signature. I was hoping to get them before I came over here, but they should be ready for me when I get back, and I will certainly send them immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Parking Authority?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age from the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our bill report, which is not opposed.
Thank you. We're checking to see if, did anyone sign up for testimony on this bill? No, no sign-in sheets. And we're checking for online attendees. Jed Weeks, are you, did you want to comment on this bill?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you again.
Go ahead, you're on.
For the record, Jed Weeks from Bike More. State TOD designation is incredibly important to increase housing and jobs near transit, expanding access to opportunity. Our metro system, recently upgraded with real-time arrival information and soon to be upgraded with brand-new metro cars, should be the backbone of our transit system. Unfortunately, poor land use surrounding metro stations has hampered ridership and long limited the potential of our city's oldest and most important rail transit line. Increasing TOD around our metro stocks is one of the most important tools we have to expand access to opportunities. We urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Checking to see if there's any... Any comments or questions thus far? So we're going to, the committee is going to table the actual vote on this at a later date, and we'll now just recess this bill until that happens, and we'll move on to the next bill. There's still some unfinished business that we have to take care of before we vote on this bill. Moving on to the next bill, number 23-0390, which is also a transit-oriented development Penn Station, for the purpose of supporting the state transit-oriented development designation for Penn Station, the area surrounding and including Baltimore Penn Station, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on May 15th, 2023, and also the bill was sponsored by President Mosby on behalf of the administration. And we'll go ahead straight to the agency reports, and we'll start again with transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Liam Davis with the City DOT again here. Similar to the last Maron City Council Resolution, Resolution 23-0390, Penn Station TOD designation was also referenced in our annual priority letter to M.D. Located at 1500 North Charles Street, Baltimore Penn Station serves as a critical transportation hub for the Baltimore metropolitan area. The station is centrally located with Amtrak's Northeast Corridor, the busiest passenger rail line in the United States by both ridership and train service. Baltimore Penn Station specifically is the seventh busiest rail station within Amtrak's portfolio. Formal state TOD designation of Baltimore Penn Station would help Baltimore City fully leverage the ongoing renovation and expansion of the historic facility. With that being said, we do request a favorable report on, or the, the resolution in advance out of committee at a date to be determined. Thank you.
Thank you. Law Department?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Hocksteller on behalf of the Law Department again. As with the last bill, the Law Department does approve for formal legal sufficiency, but again, suggests minor amendments to eliminate reference to an inapplicable executive order of the governor. And just to clarify, that it's a designation and not just support for a designation.
Thank you. And the Planning Commission?
And this bill was also reviewed in their meeting of June 8th, and the Planning Commission recommends favorable.
Thank you, Eric. And BMZA, Nina?
Nina Themelis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. BMZA stands by its report and takes no position on this legislation.
Thank you. Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock with the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill report, which is favorable.
Thank you. And the Baltimore Development Corporation?
Sylph Omar with BDC, and we stand by our bill report of favorable.
Thank you. And chap?
We recommend, we have a recommendation of favorable, and I would just also like to say that I think this is a wonderful example of how historic preservation and development and transit, transit-oriented development can really work together hand in glove. They are not in opposition, so thank you very much.
And, and who are you?
Eric Holcomb, Executive Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And committee members, Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. As stated for 389, for 390, we are in support of the bill. We just have to wait to get that signature on the paper, and we will get it to the committee as soon as possible, and we are in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from committee? Hearing none. We'll choose...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Stokes?
No, I'm glad this is happening at Penn Station. You know, it's been long overdue. Other train stations make Penn Station look like the old trains we used to play with, right, Eric Holcomb? My question is, are we talking about it being historic? Okay. We are renovating it now, so I'm a little confused about it becoming historic when we put millions and billions of dollars in there now. So how do we make it historic when we're renovating it? Can you explain it for me?
The, Penn Station is listed as a Baltimore City landmark, but there is a little nuance to this too, because that is technically owned by the federal government. We don't have approval authority like we would in other Baltimore City landmarks. Nonetheless, we worked hand in glove with the restoration architects and preservationists there to, and our, our commission did review the preservation plans for Penn Station.
Does that clarify, Councilman?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Did I miss the Parking Authority? Oh, Parking Authority?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age, Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our bill report, which is not opposed.
Thank you. So now we're going to take, did anyone sign up on a sign-in sheet for this one? And then we have online Jed Weeks?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. We would also recommend a favorable motion on this legislation. I would just add that we strongly encourage better coordination between the developer, MTA, and Baltimore City of Department of Transportation to ensure that transit access is prioritized first in station redevelopment and adjacent TOD development around the station. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other attendees seeing none? Are there any phone callers? And there's no phone callers. Any questions or comments? So we're also going to table this vote, just so we can clear up a, a lot of unfinished business, and also we're waiting for something from Public Works in writing, and there's a number of things that we need to finish up, and we'll call for a voting session, and we'll get that time and date to you as soon as possible. So on that point, for the last two bills, we are in recess, and I want to thank you for attending today's hearing, and we're now in recess.